Remotely pursuant to chapter two of the acts of 2023, an act relative to ending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency signed into law in March 29, 2023. All members of the planning board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The act allows the planning board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with deliberations of the meeting. Public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view their live stream of the meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube. They have the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comments. Members, and I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce.
Here.
Amy Fretzky.
Here.
Anthony Zeiden.
Here.
Millie Milton.
Here.
Steph, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Laurie Connors.
Here.
Great. We have no applicants on the agenda, no public comment, and we do have executive session. So for executive session, the chair will announce that the board will enter an executive session to discuss the topic and will return from executive session only to adjourn. Following a roll call vote, the webinar meeting will be ended. All board members will then leave the webinar meeting and enter the new meeting. So for this evening, the first item on our agenda is an executive session relating to litigation. I declare under Massachusetts general law chapters 38, section 21a3 that the purpose of the executive session will be to discuss strategy regarding pending litigation concerning the property at zero, no, that's not the right one. The pending land use litigation, the Gutierrez Company versus Northborough Planning Board, Land Court number 21 MISC 000380, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter is in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating, the litigating position of the board. I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session under chapter 38, section 21a3 for the purposes and reasons declared by the chair and to return to open session at the conclusion of executive session. At this time, is there a motion to move into executive session? So moved? Second.
Second.
All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. So at this time, if you're watching the meeting, we will move into executive session and come back to the public portion of the meeting shortly. Thanks.
Okay, I think that's everybody. So we will continue on with the general session of our planning board meeting. Next on our agenda is the appointment of planning board representative to the, what's the wrong agenda guys, sorry about that. Next on the agenda is appointment of planning board representative to town administrator screening committee. So the first round of screening did not end as planned. So there's a second round of screening transpiring. However, the dates that are available, the, the options on the table. Mitch Cohen, who chairs the steering committee, has put out October 30th as the initial date to get together and, you know, go through the process and questions and all of that. And then from there, the week of interviews, it would just be one week of interviews, which is a couple nights, the week of November 6. And unfortunately, that week, I am traveling the entire week. So there's no nights I can make that week. I could only actually make the meeting on the 30th, which doesn't do a lot of good because then I wouldn't be able to participate in the interview. So I wanted to bring it forward as an opportunity to appoint, if any other member on the planning board is interested in the screening committee. It's pretty light for commitment. It's that one week and one night and then obviously reading through applications. So any questions on that or interest in that?
I'm actually in the same position you're in, Carrie, as I'm traveling that first week in November.
Okay. Bill, I know we just put you on traffic committees. I don't know if that makes you.
Yeah, I've got traffic and I've got town hall feasibility. So those two, yeah, those two are making me busy.
Anthony?
I, I don't mind filling in there, but I, I would be a little concerned about the optics of having spouses on two different boards making that decision.
Hmm. Well, okay, Millie.
Is it changeable to the next week or?
No, if it were, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind doing it. Or Millie, if you wanted it, I'd be happy to give you that opportunity as well. At the time, I, well, what I could do, Anthony, if you're interested, but it's optics, I could let Mitch know that. If that's a concern to him as well, then we probably have to change the timeline. The only other thing I thought of, you know, I think it was nice, when in being a part of the first round, it was nice to have someone from a land use board be a part of that because you could ask questions. Like you'd listen for different things and ask specific questions that related to sort of like the land use in town and different things. Like we've talked a lot about housing and economic development and things like that. So I think it was nice to have someone with our eye there. The only thing I thought of was like, I don't know if maybe Paul at the ZBA wanted to be on it. I'm not sure if we can appoint from another board like that. Or we'd have to open up, or we have to open up an application process. We couldn't just say, well, could we have the other land use board represented or? Oh, I can hear you, Lori. You might be on mute there.
Gosh, oh for three. Um, I'm not sure how they wrote the charge. Whether it could be a representative of the planning board. So maybe you could appoint somebody or whether it has to be a member of the planning board. So I can, I can look into it. Maybe what we could do is put forward Anthony's item or ask if, I mean, is Amy definitely not interested? She's not here this evening. So.
I did not hear her on that.
So if, if you were concerned about the optics, maybe ask if the planning board can make the appointment?
Well, what if, so in case they have to get rolling, what if we appointed Anthony? And then I don't know if Amy's interested or not, but what if we, I hate to do what she's on here. If we did her as an alternate.
So we.
We've got another meeting. That'll, that'll be the last time she isn't here for a meeting if we do that.
We do. Well, I was also wondering too, if we, so one, my concern about the next meeting. So I'm going to flip topics for a second, if that's okay with everyone. Do we, we don't have any applications on the 17th. Do we have anything on our agenda for the 17th, Lori?
The only thing we had is I was gearing up to present the draft of the MBTA bylaw that I've been preparing. But if you'd prefer to do that on November 7th, then I'm fine with that.
So if Bill's, Bill can't make the next meeting. I'm traveling, but I will call. I will make it the point to, if we need to meet, I will come. But if we don't need to meet, I'd hate to just meet to appoint a steering committee person.
I mean, I could probably do it as a, as an alternate. Maybe Anthony, if you can do, you know, have them go through you first and then if you, you know, for some reason they have an issue.
Does that sound okay, Anthony?
I have a quick question. Did you say on, on the interview nights, which are November 6th and November 7th?
No, hold on a second. Let me look at the exact email. So I don't misstate. Okay.
Yeah, the 7th is election night and ask them to know with the caveat that Millie is okay for the 8th and 9th.
Okay, great. Um, next on the agenda is discussion of zoning bylaw amendment. So Lori, there's just what Amy submitted so far? Is that what?
I had a few that I wanted to discuss with you folks as well.
Sure.
So one of the things that really has come out as part of the downtown revitalization project is the fact that the vast majority of downtown Northboro is located within the groundwater protection overlay district. Area three predominantly. And so what that means is that there's a mandatory uptick in the minimum lot size. So if you look at our zoning book, the downtown business district has a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. However, the fact that almost the entire thing is located within the aquifer area, I mean, the groundwater area three means that the minimum lot size is really 20,000 square feet. So if the town wants to get.
The general session of our planning board meeting. Next on our agenda is the appointment of planning board representative to the. What's the wrong agenda, guys? Sorry about that. Next on the agenda is appointment of planning board representative to town administrator screening committee. So um the first round of screening did not end as planned. So there's a second round of screening transpiring. However, the dates that are available. The the options on the table, Mitch Cohen, who chairs the steering committee, has put out October thirtieth. As the initial date to get together and you know, go through the process and questions and all of that. And then from there, the week of interviews, it would just be one week of interviews, which is. A couple nights, the week of November sixth. And unfortunately, that week I am traveling the entire week, so there's no nights I can make that week. I could only actually make the meeting on the thirtieth, which doesn't do a lot of good because then. I wouldn't be able to participate in the interview, so. I wanted to bring it forward as an opportunity to appoint if any other member on the planning board is interested in the screening committee. It's pretty light for commitment is that one week and one night and then obviously reading through applications. So any questions on that or interest in that?
I'm actually in the same position you're in, Carrie, as I'm traveling that first week in November.
Okay. Bill, I know we just put you on traffic committees.
Yeah, I've got traffic and I've got town hall feasibility, so those two, yeah, those two are making me busy.
Anthony.
I I don't mind filling in there, but I I would be a little concerned about the optics. Of having spouses on two different boards making that decision.
Well, okay, Millie.
Is it changeable to the next week or?
No, if it were, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind doing it. Or Millie, if you wanted it, I'd be happy to give you that opportunity as well. At the time I, well, what I could do, Anthony, if you're interested, but it's optics, I could let Mitch know that. If that's a concern to him as well, then we probably have to change the timeline. The only other thing I thought of. You know, I think it was nice when in being a part of the first round, it was nice to have someone from a land use board. Be a part of that because you could ask questions like you'd listen for different things and ask specific questions that related to sort of like the land use in town and. Different things that like we've talked a lot about housing and economic development and things like that. So I think it was nice to have someone with our eye there. The only thing I thought of was like, I don't know if maybe Paul as the ZBA wanted to. Be on it. I'm not sure if we can. Appoint from another board like that, or we'd have to open up, or we have to open up. An application process, we couldn't just say, well, could we have the other land use board represented or? Oh, I can hear you, Laurie, you might be on mute there.
Gosh, oh, for three. I'm not sure how they wrote the charge. Whether it could be a representative of the planning board. So maybe you could appoint somebody or whether it has to be a member of the planning board. So I can um I can look into it. Maybe what we could do is. Put forward Anthony's item or ask if, I mean, is Amy definitely not interested? She's not here this evening, so.
I did not hear her on that.
So if if you were concerned about the optics, maybe ask if the planning board can make the appointment.
Well, what if, so in case they have to get rolling, what if we appointed Anthony? And then I don't know if Amy's interested or not, but. What if we hate to do, which is on here, if we did her as an alternate?
So we have time, we've got another meeting.
That'll that'll be the last time she isn't here for a meeting if we do that.
We do. Well, I was also wondering too, if we, so one, my concern about the next meeting. So I'm going to flip topics for a second, if that's okay with everyone. Do we have, we don't have any applications on the seventeenth. Do we have anything on our agenda for the seventeenth, Lori?
The only thing we had is I was gearing up to present the draft of the MBTA by law that I've been preparing. But if you'd prefer to do that on November seventh, then I'm fine by that.
So if Bill's, Bill can't make the next meeting. I'm traveling, but I will call, I will make it the point to. If we need to meet, I will come, but if we don't need to meet, I'd hate to just meet to appoint a steering committee person.
I mean, I could probably do it as a as an alternate. Maybe Anthony, if you can do, you know, have them go through you first and then if you, you know, for some reason they have an issue.
Does that sound okay, Anthony?
I have a quick question. Did you say on on the interview nights, which are November sixth and November seventh?
No, hold on a second. Let me look at the email. So I don't misstate. Okay.
Yeah, the seventh is actually our meeting, so.
It's election night, too.
It's election night, so I doubt we can even meet. And I wonder, can any meetings transpire on election night, Lori, like even?
Yeah, you're typically not allowed to have meetings on election night.
No, I didn't think so. That's what I was checking.
Okay, so maybe Mitch didn't realize that. So the dates that he has proposed is Monday tenth or October thirtieth at seven P M. That's to review the application packets and decide who to interview. Then he wanted to do interviews for the seventh and eighth with a backup day of the ninth. So that the select board could have final interviews the week of the eleventh thirteen, and I think that's all intended to not jam up against Thanksgiving. So if he can't, if the seventh you cannot do, I would assume that means the eighth and the ninth for that week.
Okay.
Does that change your situation, Millie?
Yep.
Oh, does it make you want to do it or no?
Sure, yeah, yeah. I mean, I would like to do it, actually.
Okay, Anthony, does that, do you, do you want to do it enough where? You'd like, you'd like to be an alternate or do you want to go for it altogether, or are we just being the the one who we kind of forced it on?
I was like the last choice, so. Oh, yeah. So if Millie's interested, then go for it.
Okay. All right, and Bill, does that, I assume you're only putting yourself as a, you're submitting yourself as a sacrifice, not because you. Um, and I, you know, this is, I I'm kind of disappointed to not be a part of it. It was really a great process and I think. It's really interesting and it was really nice to meet all those different candidates and it was. It was easy in the in terms of not being a huge lift, so. All right, is there then a motion to appoint Millie Milton as the planning board representative to town administrator screening committee?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of Bill?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. So I'm gonna mention to Mitch that the seventh is election night and ask. Just let him know with the caveat that Millie is okay for the eighth and ninth. Okay, great. Um, next on the agenda is discussion of zoning bylaw amendments. So Lori, there's just what Amy submitted so far, is that what?
I had a few that I wanted to discuss with you folks as well.
Sure.
Um, so. One of the things that really has come out as part of the downtown revitalization project. Is the fact that the vast majority of downtown Northborough is located within the groundwater protection overlay district. Area three predominantly. And so what that means is that there's a mandatory uptick in the minimum lot size. So if you look at our zoning book, the downtown business district has a minimum lot size of four thousand square feet. However, the fact that almost the entire thing is located within. The aquifer area, I mean, the groundwater area three means that the minimum lot size is really. Twenty thousand square feet. So if the town wants to get a more classic dense downtown. More in line with the underlying zoning district, this is a big problem. Um, so one of the things that I was thinking about doing. Is if you look at the groundwater protection overlay. There are certain by right uses that are commercial developments. And then there are uses that are allowed by special permit. So currently, the commercial development that is by right. Is limited to retail shopping, business or professional office. And there are a number of other commercial uses that have similar impacts that are not on this list. And certainly don't cause any harm to the aquifer, for example, a bank. Or a um, let's see. Other potential uses are personal service. So if you had like a massage parlor. So right now, these uses. Are required to go to the ZBA for a special permit. But for the most part, all they're using is massage oils. And like a hair salon is another example. They're using dyes, you know, maybe perms. And that's pretty much it. Other than that, it's just cleanser that any other type of business would use. And the same is true for restaurant uses. So my thought is to expand the list of commercial development uses that are allowed by right. So pretty much it would be any of the commercial development uses. And then the types of uses that would require a special permit. Are the ones that use toxic or hazardous chemicals. So it would make it easier to permit these uses. And it would also enable us to finally get down to that four thousand square feet if we eliminated. The ten twenty thousand minimum lot size. For these type of uses. And so I mean, what's the point of having a four thousand minimum lot size? If nobody can actually achieve that minimum lot size because all of the properties are in the overlay district, you know, it kind of. Kind of makes it silly.
Why the um, the minimum lot size is twenty thousand? Like, is there any reason? I just seem so.
I think it's a growth management tool. But what the end result is, is the sprawling auto dominated. Design that we currently have downtown. So there's, there's not going to be a way to get away from that. With the groundwater protection overlay being. Pretty much the entirety of the downtown district. So that was one thing that I was thinking of changing. So it would still have the requirement. Having to do with. The runoff. So it would still say that the increase in post development net runoff shall not exceed existing conditions by more than fifteen percent. The impervious cover of the building is increased over existing conditions by no more than forty percent. Or there is no restriction of lot coverage beyond that provided by underlying zoning. Where the proponent can demonstrate and certify that runoff waters leaving the developed site. Via surface blow will not violate class B water quality standards, et cetera, goes on from there. And any onsite sewage disposal is less than or equal to one hundred and ten gallons per day. Per ten thousand square feet of lot area. So essentially what I did is I merged pieces of the special permit criteria. With the by right criteria. So that's, that's what I did. So then my proposal. Is to eliminate the commercial development special permit criteria. For everything except those uses that involve the toxic, the toxic and hazardous waste. So I can provide you with a specific language at the next meeting.
Any questions, initial questions or thoughts from the board?
So Lori, are you saying specifically in the downtown business zoning district? Not business east, not business, or just the specific downtown business?
You know, I was thinking everywhere because the reality is that. Pretty much everywhere else in the state, area three isn't regulated at all. This is an extra level of regulation that the town in Northborough has that most towns don't have. And so. The concern, I mean, let's be real. They're, they're not going behind their business and dropping, you know, perm. Chemicals into the river. So the chance of those perm chemicals getting out of the business and going into the river. Is pretty much non-existent unless somebody goes ahead and purposely pours them down there. So the risk from these businesses has to do with the septic system and the drainage system, and that's it. So if you're already regulating that through the groundwater protection by law. Then you really don't have to be concerned about like underground storage tanks, you know, like a gas station. Or a um industrial use where they have huge vats of these chemicals that could possibly leak. Those are the businesses of concern, not these little massage parlors and hair salons that are made to. Jump through this hoop where they have to give us a list of all of the, you know. Types of hair dye that they use and the chemicals that are included within it. Um, so it just, it just seems like. We're making these folks go through this step for no real environmental benefit. So I'd, I'd still recommend keeping the regulation on area two. Um, and area one, of course, but not on area three. But we still would be going after those non-point source pollutants. With regards to the septic systems and the drainage facilities.
Questions from any, anyone else or thoughts?
And you're saying to reduce the minimum lot area to four thousand or to?
To eliminate the mandatory upsize. So if you look at um. Downtown Northborough, you really have three different zoning districts. So you have. Uh, the MSR district, you have downtown business district and you have downtown neighborhood district. And the minimum lot size is varied. So downtown business is four thousand square feet. Uh, downtown neighborhood, I believe it's uh, ten thousand square feet. And the MSR is fifteen thousand square feet. So you'd still. Have to adhere to the minimum lot size requirements of the specific districts with the properties are located in.
Okay, okay. Um, but but disregard or not disregard, but eliminate the upsize because of the groundwater three.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Very.
Why do you think, I I mean, I know you're saying it's because of the runoff and the, the. Chemicals that could have possibly be into, uh, put into the, the water system. Um, but is that the only reason they would have chosen twenty thousand square feet for downtown and twenty five for, you know, main street residential? Versus?
Well, they just applied it to the entire town.
Okay.
So they applied it to anywhere in town regardless of zoning district that is within area three. And they did the same in area two and the same in area one. So the problem is it's negatively impacting our downtown and what people want to see long term, the downtown.
Okay.
Okay. Cool. Um, so another thing that Amy had suggested.
I just wanted to make sure. So Anthony, do you have thoughts on that one or? Yeah, Bill, anything from you?
No, to me, it makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing it written down. That was a little hard to follow. So I thought originally you were just. So when you first mentioned the size, I, that was where I had one, but then I went to the uses as well. So it sounds like a two part.
Yeah, so, so the new language, so right now the language says commercial development.
Could you mind, what page you on, by the way, that'll just help me look at it.
Yeah, let me uh, let me get that one.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were already looking at it. That's okay.
No, I, I wrote this down, but I wrote it down right before the meeting, so I, I didn't think it was fair to email it to you guys.
Oh, do you have it? Seven sixty three.
Seven sixty five.
Oh. Oh, I had a seven sixty three, okay.
You have the yellow book?
Hmm, probably.
Yes, I do.
So I need to get everybody the red book. So whoever, whoever doesn't have the red book, please come and get it.
I don't. Do we get our, our bylaws approved? Do the A D approve them?
This is actually from not this past town meeting, but the uh, prior year. So we've had those books for a while now. So.
All right, so here they are. Okay, we're on seven sixty five.
Seven sixty five. So if you look under area two.
Number four.
Subsection four.
Three.
And then if you, if you look under, um, so that's the special permit area. And then also, if you would look at the prior page seven sixty three in my book. Where it talks about by right uses within area three.
Mm-hmm.
So it's uh, number three under that section. So letter C, three. So under that area, why don't we do that first? So my new language is commercial development as allowed per underlying zoning. That does not involve as accessory uses. The manufacturer, storage, application, transportation and or disposal of toxic or hazardous materials. Such that the increase in post development net runoff volume shall not exceed existing conditions by more than fifteen percent. The impervious cover of the building is increased over existing conditions by no more than forty percent. Or there is no restriction of lot coverage beyond that provided by underlying zoning. Where the proponent can demonstrate and certify that runoff waters leaving the developed site. Via surface blow will not violate class B water quality standards. And runoff waters leaving the site via groundwater recharge will not violate. Class one groundwater quality standards, three fourteen C M R six. And any onsite sewage disposal is less than or equal to one hundred and ten gallons per day per ten thousand square feet of plot area. So what this does is it eliminates the mandatory uptick in lot size. Instead of just saying that this applies to retail shopping, business or professional offices. I just broadened the, the commercial use classification to include pretty much every use. That doesn't involve toxic or hazardous materials. And I also provided an ability to not have to adhere to the lot coverage requirement. And the reason for that is because the lot coverage requirement. Uh, is non-existent in the downtown business district. So the whole point is you should be able to pretty much build on the entire parcel. As long as you are infiltrating your stormwater runoff into the ground. So you're cleansing it. And infiltrating it into the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's what that would do.
Percentages, I feel like it was forty down to fifteen, but then fifteen up to forty, or did I? Did you flip the percentages on that?
Um, post development net runoff shall not exceed, exceed existing conditions by more than fifteen percent. And then the next one, the forty percent has to do with the impervious cover.
Oh, okay, all right. I got you.
Lori, does that create an issue with parking? Like now people can build and so we're going to be limiting the parking in the area, which is already an issue?
So one of the, what we're trying to do with the downtown revitalization plan, I'm apologize that you folks haven't seen it yet. Um, it's still in draft form. What we're trying to do is provide alternative options in the downtown. So there are certain locations where on-street parking is proposed. And then there's a recommendation to build. A couple of new municipal parking lots. So the benefit of that. Um, and you'll see in the new um. MBTA by law. I provide, well, we'll see if you guys agree to include some of that in the downtown. In case you do. I provided an allowance for people who have businesses that have excessive quantities of parking. They would be able to share their parking lot with businesses that are located within five hundred feet. Uh, for differing hours of operation, like for example. Uh, the church has been talking about how they don't really use their parking lot and they may be interested in sharing it with others. Um, so if there were a business nearby, they're located within five hundred feet. They could come up with a legally binding agreement to share the parking. For differing hours, like for example, if there were restaurants that were only open, you know, lunchtime and after. Then that might be a, a good use uh, for sharing purposes. And then it would specify how many parking spaces they'd be willing to share with this business. And I imagine that there would be some compensation that would uh, exchange hands, but. You know, that would be a private matter for them to deal with. So the idea is to. Figure out alternatives, so not everybody has to have their own dedicated parking lot. So they, or they could have a smaller parking lot than they would otherwise. So it's to, to give some flexibility.
Do we have to change other bylaws for that? Because there's certain parking requirements.
Well, it may be something that we may be interested in doing in the downtown business district. So there are certain development regulations that are specific to the downtown business district. And this might be one that we would want to consider. Uh, one of the recommendations in the report is also to do a parking garage. I don't know if that's ever going to happen. Um, but regardless of whether it is a parking garage or whether it's surface parking, the idea is the same.
Is Fred still contracting with us or does Fred contract with us at all, the town?
Uh, Fred Litchfield?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's uh, he's doing some part-time consulting. He does maybe. Ten to nineteen hours a week, I think.
If there's any opportunity to have him like, look at this also, not, obviously you have expertise as well, but like, I'd love. But because he has all the history in town, I'd love to know, like, why did we go up to twenty thousand? Does this actually have impact on groundwater? No impact, like. Does that ever matter, the twenty thou? It's just so hard without having like any sort of. I wouldn't mind if, or even, I don't know, if not Fred, I don't know if Scott is a good, does Scott have any groundwater expertise? I wouldn't mind hearing any sort of history there.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, I hesitate to change groundwater bylaws without a groundwater expert opinion.
I, I'd be happy to ask him to chime in.
That'd be a good point.
Yep. Okay, so then another thing that I was thinking of, um, this was actually something that Amy asked me to put together. I can't remember whether it was in the context of design review or whether it was the planning board. Um, she wanted the industrial district. That is um, within the vicinity of the southwest connector. To be rezoned to commercial use. So of course.
That a couple of times, yeah.
So the um. So the, um, Northborough Crossing is already held. To the requirements of the highway business district. So if this conversion were to happen. Um, even if it's just on a portion of the area, that would be my recommendation. Is to convert it into the highway business district. Now, of course, you got the gravel pit in there. So that is a very large chunk of undeveloped land. Uh, that could be something special, so. I mean, of course, it could be a warehouse, distribution center, so that's a possibility. The benefit of rezoning this area is then, you know, we'd be. Taking away that as an option. But I, I just wanted to hear your thoughts. As to whether that's something that the majority of you wanna go forward with, or is that. Something that just maybe one or two you want to.
Oh, rezone to commercial, industrial district in that area, rezone to commercial use.
I would rezone it to the highway business district.
Why, why so?
Essentially because Amy asked me to do it. That was, uh, that was why I put that wording together. Um, I suspect that a major rationale is a huge portion of that area is already used. For commercial purposes. So there isn't much land left. And there isn't much land that's in industrial use, except for the gravel pit. The gravel pit is definitely in industrial use. So it may be possible to. Keep that industrial and rezone the other parcels, uh, highway business. Um, or we could leave it alone and just have the whole area still be industry.
So, so isn't the ball fields, just trying to look.
Currently industrial district.
It is. So, and I, I mean, in my opinion, I would like to prevent more warehouses coming to town and promote. Whether it's commercial development, offices, or retail in that area would make a lot more sense to me, uh, and serve the town much better.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, I agree with Anthony. I, I think it makes, right at nine and twenty there, you've got the convergence of two major highways, so. Having that commercial rather than industrial, I think makes a lot more sense.
Millie, you was, you like that idea as well? Let Millie think about it. Um, I think that's, I think we've talked about this for quite a while, and I, I'm in favor of that as well. Um, but you couldn't do industrial, there's not a, this isn't an overlay, this is changing the zoning.
This would be changing the zoning altogether. So right now, this whole area is located in an overlay. Uh, so it's located in.
The business overlay, whatever that is.
Yeah, yeah, it's called the major commercial development overlay district.
Okay, so, and I, I, I'm in favor of this, but I'm just questioning. You've changed the zoning, does that turn everything into non-conforming uses at Northborough Crossing, or no?
No, Northborough Crossing would be conforming. So right now, it's non-conforming because they got a variance. So it would make it conforming.
Huh, well, even better then. Okay, Millie, we didn't hear, it sounds like you like this idea as well?
Yes, I do.
Okay, alright, so it sounds like that's.
So you want me to include the gravel pit or not include the gravel pit?
I think we include it.
I agree. I would also include the ball fields, if we can.
And also Avalon is in that area. So that's already built out as Avalon. Uh, so that is the vast majority of the lands that's available. It's the gravel pit, Northborough Crossing, Avalon. You know, the ball fields.
Wait, so Avalon is then, isn't that non-conforming? What is Avalon considered?
So they got a comprehensive permit?
Yeah, they're an industrial now.
Okay.
Okay, so then there's a little one, um, that we've been talking about quite a bit. So instead of having a condition every single time that says that the exterior lighting needs to be full cutoff. And conform to dark skies guidelines, as stated by the International Dark Sky Association. Um, I propose to just change that section of the site design standards. So it's, it's there. So we don't have to keep talking about it.
Uh, any thoughts on that? That seems like it's an easy. Well, that reminds me, there are some other things that we're always conditioning, like, um, maintaining your landscaping in perpetuity. Is that something that we could think about? Or are there other things you've noticed that maybe we're always having a condition and remember? I feel like that's one.
I can absolutely include that. And then Amy, uh, Amy sent an email with her wish list. Uh, do you want me to go through that?
Um, sure. Do you feel comfortable going? Do, does it pretty?
Yeah, I mean, uh, some of them I feel more comfortable talking about than others. Uh, the sign bylaw update. She doesn't have that ready for prime time yet, so she'll send that, uh, when she's ready. Let's see, uh, she had. Said Laurie mentioned to me last year, we could add something about no metal buildings on Main Street, Business West, DB, BE. Yes, uh, so we had something like that in our industrial district in Milbury. So if that's something that interests you. I can add that. So, of course, the standard in the industrial district today is to build a metal building. So, are you okay with that? Or would you prefer me to include language that says that that's no longer allowed?
Well, is she just saying Business West, um, downtown business and Business East are the only districts?
Okay, I could just do it in that, leave the industrial district alone?
Bill, was that an okay with you too? I didn't catch your nod or one way or the other.
Sorry, yes.
Okay. Let's see. Next one has to do with lighting. I just discussed that. Uh, she mentions, uh, that I had talked about a timeline for construction completion. Uh, we could do that in, um. Milbury, the, the standard, uh, was eighteen months. And then we increased it to twenty-four months. So there was actually a deadline from, actually, I'm sorry, for site plan reviews. The deadline was that they had to start construction within that two-year period of time. Once they started construction, there wasn't a deadline for completion of construction.
I just wonder if we can force the deadline for completion. Is that a valid bylaw? I wonder if we'd have trouble with that one.
I feel comfortable with a deadline to start construction. But, you know, there, the projects really do vary in size. So I think it would be more appropriate if you were interested in putting a deadline on completion of construction. That it be on a case-by-case basis. Because if you're talking about Northborough Crossing, that's a very different thing than if you're talking about. You know, uh, two thousand square foot restaurant.
That makes sense.
Uh, she wants to go forward with warehouse definitions again.
Did we do that last year or the year before?
Year before.
Wow, time flies.
I mean, I think this one is absolutely necessary. I don't know how to get it through in our town. We have quite a debate over it, um. I, I think we'd almost need to get. I don't even know if we have the LPA hours or whatever the case, like almost outside help devising it. I don't think. Did we try it on our own last time? I think we had to come up with it on our own, but we use like examples from CMR PC, but. So it's not like we came up with random definitions. It was based on, um, what other towns are doing. But I feel like there may be a level of comfort if we actually had. Someone come in and help with that? I don't know.
One thing that I'm concerned about, especially if we're rezoning the industrial di- district off the southwest cutoff. Is there really isn't a lot of buildable land left that would be appropriate for large warehouses. Um, so we'd be making all the existing warehouses, uh, you know, legal, non-conforming. I'm not sure, sure how many new warehouses could actually go in that would be.
Already non-conforming with the special permits now required? So there are, are they already non-conforming?
Correct.
So that leads to. I'm just looking through my map.
Well, the only, the area then that would impact is across the other side of town, not the Bartlett area, the other, the other industrial zone. Where Whitney Street is.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, maybe we can think of that one.
Alright.
We'll table it for now. Amy mentioned an eight hundred foot setback between truck terminals and residential. You know, what I would rather do is rezone the area between truck terminals and residential to, uh. More sensitive type of uses, like commercial uses. So you have a buffer.
Yep.
Because this might be problematic with the Attorney General's office, because that. Eight hundred foot setback is a huge area. So you'd be rendering a lot of land undevelopable.
Yeah, I thought that some sort of a buffer zone between those industrial zones and, and residential would be. Probably helpful to avoid issues.
And we can look at the specific locations to see wha- what's left. You know, as far as developing in industri- developable industrial lands within the proximity of. Residential uses. Next, she wants to eliminate the requirement for two architects on design review. Right now, we have an opening. So actually, we have two openings. We only have three members, zero architects currently.
So for that one, I actually had a different thought. Um, I was wondering, for that particular committee, because it requires. Experts, specific expertise, and in some cases, um, specific licensing. And it really limits our pool in general, and sometimes our pool is too close to the projects. Do we have the ability to open it up to just, you don't have to live in Northborough? So like, if you're in another town, but. I mean, I suppose maybe you wouldn't wanna help out another town. Maybe you would, I'm not sure, but. Like, if we open up to another town, would it take away that, like, sometimes that emotional connection to projects, or any sort of conflicts, or. I work with this person, so I give this person business, or any of that stuff, if we opened it up beyond Northborough, that's what I was kinda wondering. Because we keep getting jammed up on that.
Unfortunately, you can't. Um, so town committees have to be populated by town residents.
Because the design, design review has actually been given life by way of our bylaws, not the town charter. So I don't know if we run by different rules.
I'll ask Andy Dowd. And get back to you.
Okay, great.
Let's see. I'm sorry, I'm taking notes here, so just bear with me. Next one. This says, I think she's talking about the downtown business. Since the master plan is finishing up, I would like to update our DB, I, I believe that's downtown business district. To include many of the Shrewsbury Town Center District standards. Uh, and then she included the zoning bylaw from Shrewsbury with specific pages. You know, certainly, we can look at that. I imagine. You, you don't wanna carve in copy of, uh, Shrewsbury and. Uh, North Borough Center, so some things would be different. But certainly, we can talk about it. So MBTA, as you know, I'm working on it. And, uh, that's pretty much all true.
When we go with the MBTA one, we don't actually go forward with the properties. We go through it forward with the bylaw. Not the properties, is that what we do at town meeting?
Both. Uh, so we have to identify specific properties. So because we've been having a real hard time reaching consensus, and I was really concerned that we'd run out of time. I have gone forward with, uh, preparing the district. So what I've been doing is, is kind of been a struggle, because I don't have specific properties ironed down. But I've been creating a district that is more in line with the character of the southwest cutoff property. And then another one that is more in line with downtown Northborough. So, um, I have like design standards that would apply to. One or the other. And then I, um, well, you'll see, I, I don't wanna get into the weeds about it. Without having you have the, uh, suggested language in front of you, so you can see what it looks like. But yes, we, to go to town meeting, we have to have the location, and we have to have the bylaw itself.
Okay. Any other, um, bylaws that we're considering, or questions, or comments on the ones that we have listed so far? So Millie, you're mute there.
If we wanted to change something that I think is in our, possibly in our rules and regulations. Would that go through a bylaw or a town meeting?
So the rules and regs are really easy to do. So the only thing we have to do to change something in the rules and regs is hold a public hearing. And then after the public hearing is closed, either adopt the regulations as proposed, or as amended. Uh, so that doesn't go to a town meeting vote. So zoning bylaws, uh, go to the town meeting vote. So chances are, um, with the new MBTA. There would be companion rules and regulations, then be nice to adopt in the future. But I wouldn't recommend doing that until after town meeting to see if town meeting, uh, goes ahead and approves the bylaw.
Okay. Um, I have a question on why we would consider. Two applications for the same piece of property at the same time. Versus other organizations don't seem to want to do that. Why, why? What's? Would we consider not doing that as well?
So you wanna include certain language in the zoning bylaws that says that you can only.
Or in the planning board rules and regulations. Wouldn't that be more appropriate? Then we would sort of avoid a situation that we're in, or reduce it, I think. But what's the, uh, what's the downside? I think it's maybe worth discussing. But what's the up, what's the downside? I think it's maybe worth discussion.
Yeah, the challenge is that um. So say one property owner is interested in doing one thing, so they go through the special permits, like plan approval process. Um and they obtain those permits. And then six months later, they sell the land to somebody else. And the new buyer has no interest in going forward with the original proposal. So then they submit new applications to do something else. So in the case of a subdivision. Uh I have encountered this. So what is typically the process is like, say, for example. Uh there was a residential subdivision approved for a piece of land. And then residential subdivisions, definitive subdivisions stay forever. They never expire. Um in order to, they have to be rescinded, and so, and they're rescinded in the same way that they're actually approved. Uh so that means that you have to advertise, you have to hold the public hearing, and you have to take a vote to actually rescind the subdivision approval. Um, so what has happened in the past? Is there, I have required them to submit rescission paperwork for the subdivision approval. At the same time that they're submitting a new application for a new development scheme. And then. The approval happens of the new development scheme. And the rescission usually happens simultaneously in the same meeting.
Okay.
So first, they take the vote on the um. The new development scheme, because usually a developer doesn't want to give up the subdivision until they know for sure that they have the new approval. So they vote on the new approval first, and then they vote on the rescission immediately after. So I've had some experience with that scenario.
Okay, so so would that be something that would? Really eliminate the situation that we're in, where we're looking at two different applications. From the same piece of property, from the same applicant, or?
Well, it's a little bit different because um they applied for the subdivision after. They applied for the site plan, so typically a site plan expires if they don't act on it. Uh within a two-year period of time.
Exactly.
So the the site plan expires, but the subdivision does not. I'll have to think about that a little more.
Yeah, just trying to not have us be in the situation where we're somewhat caught in. Uh you know, uh unclear circumstance of what we're supposed to be making decisions on going two ways. On a, on a site plan.
Yeah, let me, let me think about that.
Time and energy and effort spent on something that, you know.
Yeah.
They are not making a decision on something, so why are we making the decision?
Right.
Just curious, anyways, okay.
Any other thoughts? Well, it wouldn't be a town meeting if I didn't have something controversial to throw into the mix.
Yeah, is that how you're gonna start it?
I still firmly believe we need to get rid of use variances. I continue to believe that no matter how we zone, and especially as we go into a downtown business district. Where we want things to be a certain way, I think for as long as use variances exist, we will always be at risk for not getting what we intended, so.
How many times, how many times have you fought this battle?
Every two years I go back. And by the way, if the board doesn't agree, obviously, there, I don't, that's fine, that's okay, but I do think it's worth discussing, because. It was actually Judy Barrett that had put that, that original notion in my head, that when she did a course or one of, when we used to do those classes. Um and one of them she did was downtown planning or something, and that was her main case, like if you have use variances in your bylaws. Stop and start over, because you're not going to get what you want, so. And Laurie, and I know I think you like them, and maybe in certain cases, not uses for dimensional, so not like your signs or stuff like that, only the use.
Well, we did have an interesting case last week that I want to point out to you.
Okay.
Um, so this was a request for a variance. Um because it's a spa that was interested in selling alcohol. As an accessory use. Um so the owner of the salon came in and said that they frequently have wedding parties. Getting their hair done and um you know, special events, bachelor party, or whatever. And. The people smuggle in bottles of wine in their purses and drink at the salon. And so there are high-end salons in the, in the Boston area. That you provide that service, if you're interested in buying a glass wine, you can do so. But it wasn't covered under a zoning bylaw, so they had to get a use variance, which they, they got. So now, um this one particular spa is going to be uh. Serving alcohol if they're able to get a liquor license from the select board in the state.
And what in our bylaws that we have alcohol as an accessory use?
No, so that's why it's prohibited, so that's why they had to get the variance.
No, I know, but what, what is the um use that, so it must be, it must be allowed in another district? What, what is the use that's allowed in another, it's a use that's not allowed at all?
No, so, yeah, so in our zoning bylaw, it says that if the use isn't expressly allowed, it's prohibited. So because it wasn't in our zoning bylaw as an accessory use, it was prohibited. So that was the call that the town, uh town, um the building inspector made.
But you shouldn't be able to get a use variance for a prohibited use. I mean, I don't disagree that, I think that sounds like a lovely idea, what they go on it, it wasn't like it was. But if it's offensive, if it's like the ones we actually put in, we actually went through this exercise, because we didn't believe that that was strong enough. So we actually listed prohibited uses and said in no time could a use variance be granted for our prohibited uses. And what did we put in there, like the craziest things?
Abattoir, uh you know, I remember that one.
No, in in this case, it was like perfectly, sounds perfectly fine, but when it's something bad, you can't give a use variance for what the town people wanted prohibited. That's just, that's not right.
Well, it's not specifically prohibited, it's just not called for.
I thought so.
But the, but the bylaw says that if it's not allowed, it's prohibited.
So then it was a prohibited use, but we said, well, even though we agreed that if it's not allowed, it's prohibited. We're gonna grant a use, this is exactly why use variances don't belong.
No, but she's saying if it's not allowed, not if it's not allowed.
What?
So am I, am I getting this right?
It's not expressly prohibited, it's just not allowed, so because it's not allowed, it's prohibited.
Permitted, it's not saying it's not allowed, it's just saying it's not expressly allowed.
But I think Carrie's point is that because it's not, it it's not. A use fair, it's not a use, right, it required a variance, the townspeople never voted that it was actually allowed. Right, who voted that it was allowed? The, the ZBA.
Right.
And only the ZBA.
So if you want to allow that use, you should come back to town meeting and say, everybody, this is what we have that's come up. And that we think should, do you want to allow this? And then the town gets to vote yes, not just, and regardless of five people. Rather than just five people decide, yeah, sure, we'll do that, because sometimes it may be okay, we, most of us would say that sounds okay, but sometimes it may be. I don't know, like fur skinning, which is one of the ones we had a problem with.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I don't know, anyway, we don't have to solve it now, that's just my, that's my contribution.
Interesting, yeah.
Hey, you want me to take the language from the two years ago and pop it in this year's?
I don't know, we can talk more about it, I've been interested in the boards.
I I'm with you, Carrie, I I I think it should, it should be eliminated.
Um, alright, but we can, that's all, that's all I had, I don't know if anybody else had anything else.
No, I just, I think Bill can then read it at town meeting.
Sure, no problem. I think the, the one that I read, that I ended up reading on the last town meeting was one of the uh, the most talked about, so. And we thought it was gonna be an easy one.
Would you have the um five-foot setback?
The five-foot setback on the driveway, yeah.
You just reminded me, I received an email, so sometimes the public submits um emails as well. And I did get an email from Doug Stone, and he touched upon that, and he had a suggestion for a bylaw, I did not have a chance to forward it to the group. Uh Laurie, you as well, so I'm sorry, I will do that, you just remind me of it, um. But he also had a suggestion, and then sometimes we get people submit things or whatever the case, but. I can't find it on hand, but I think it was related to that. I'll find and send it, okay. Alright, anything else on bylaws? And then I was getting back to Groundwater for a second, um or even Bob, like Laurie, sometimes Bob will go through or Fred has gone through in the past. I don't know if they've had the, well, obviously not Fred, but anything we've heard there, okay. Alright, it looks like no A and Rs, Laurie's is bonds, any subcommittee updates to share?
Not for me.
Yeah, the um Open Spaces met last Monday, um they decided that uh they've now set. Um the meeting schedule to be the fourth Monday or the last, sorry, the last Monday of every other month. Uh but one of the other things they're doing is they're sending out letters to um property owners. Um to see if they're interested in, in speaking with the Open Spaces about conserv- uh conserving their land. And um Laurie, one of the, I asked um them to contact you, because one of the properties that came up was seventy-seven. Uh West Main, and I know that was something we had talked about with um with the MBTA.
Yeah, I mean, one, one of the negatives of having that land be permanently protected. Is that it won't be available for developments, and of course, the idea was that um. There be recreation facilities developed by the developer. So there would be a combination of uh you know, uh mixed uses. As well as recreation space, so I I'd rather see them not purchase that land. I think that that would be a negative to the downtown revitalization effort.
Yeah, so I asked them to forward the entire spreadsheet that, that they have to you, so that you can go over it, just make sure that there's not, no conflicts. Between, you know, what the two boards are trying to, or two committees are trying to do.
Okay.
And then um traffic safety um has its first meeting on the seventeenth, so I. If we do have a planning board meeting on the seventeenth, I won't be able to attend.
Okay, so what um, what, do we really have, uh if we, could we move the um MBTA bylaw to a general discussion on November seventh about bylaws?
We don't have a meeting on the seventh.
On the twenty-first then? Or is there another, okay, um. What? Oh, you wouldn't know by now, their deadline hasn't passed for November anyway, so the twenty-first deadline, the deadline for November twenty-first for our application submissions hasn't passed yet, has it? I doubt it. Is three seventeen Crawford ever coming back?
I'm sorry?
Is three seventeen Crawford Street ever coming back, or do they withdraw?
They withdrew, so it's my understanding that they are going forward with the Conservation Commission Seminole. So they don't have to come to the planning board in that case.
Do we need, we open to hearing though, do we need to vote to withdraw?
That happens.
Did we did do that?
Yeah.
Good?
They, they asked to withdraw their application.
Okay, and we voted on it.
Are you sure it was in the spring?
Oh, I may have missed that one, I, maybe I was traveling, or maybe I just don't remember, okay. Alright, um. So we're not gonna, we won't meet on the seventeenth. Or the seventh, because it's election night. Then our next meeting will be on November twenty-first. Um upcoming meetings, looks like master plan, um ZBA meetings coming up.
Yeah, we're waiting, um so there were a lot of comments on the draft downtown revitalization plan. So we're hoping to meet uh in October, at uh it's the third. Uh Thursday of the month, whatever that date that is. Um, that's the nineteenth. Their deadline to submit the revised plan is next week. So if they do not submit the revised plan, then chances are that that meeting on the nineteenth will be pushed back. Maybe possibly a week, or maybe more.
Okay. Alright, any other business? And then motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Really?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye, have a great night, thanks, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.